My goodness, you're talking my language.
And the zest of a neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, I'm very interested in that one.
Call the. Order.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the United Republic, which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Pledge allegiance to the fine of the United States of America, the United Republic, which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All sign the law.
It's going to be.
Yeah.
She's still there. Just when she goes out the door.
Have all start consign the law. Anybody know any air or missions of the town?
Yeah.
April eighteen through twenty twenty-three. Anybody know any air or missions of the town? And there is like in minutes.
The extension is something forty-five days, but inherent.
The only thing I wanted to question was. The extension. The extension itself is forty-five days, but inherent is thirty.
Yeah, Tika said thirty.
Yeah, so I did it as.
Did we change it? I don't know, I can't remember exactly what we said.
I think.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tika said thirty and the attorney said forty-five.
Okay.
So I did it as it was in the meeting.
Okay. I just want to double check.
My only question.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's what we, this is what we had, so this is.
Right, yeah.
We could ask the question of.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I could, because we talked about it a couple different times, so I just wasn't there.
I don't know, that's what we, this is what we had, so this is.
Right, yeah.
We want to change it.
Right, right.
We just asked the question of.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, I could, because we talked about it a couple different times, so I just wasn't there.
Buddy, come on. Team folded on.
Thirty.
Buddy, come on. Get him.
Approve.
We'll make a garter or a buckle.
Welcome back. Wait, don't be nervous. I will second the motion.
They move the second that we approve the town and there is like in minutes, April eighteen twenty-three. Almost favor.
A favor.
A favor.
Sit.
He checks everything. He's a cutie.
Come here. Sit. That's it.
This will be the only adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
And we'll put them in.
At the end.
At the end.
Because you have.
And it'll be the only adjustments to the agenda?
Buddy.
Yes.
And we'll put them in.
Public comment?
At the end.
At the end.
Yeah.
I guess we all. Any announcements? He says the select board meeting will go to the public hearing.
Buddy.
For the problem. Public comment? I guess we all. He says the select board meeting will go to the public hearing. Problem the ordinance.
What else? Buddy, no, I'm friendly.
Buddy, stop. Come here, hurry.
Buddy, no, I'm friendly.
No, kiss him up.
Buddy, stop. You don't get to protect him. Come here, hurry.
The blue paper is for the. Chain. That was what I had to. Um, yeah. So.
And then Chad sent you guys.
The blue paper is for the.
I gave you guys copies of.
Chain, for the.
And I also sent Chad what we had sent to the attorney.
That was what I had to.
Did you get my email?
I did, I did, right.
Yeah. And then Chad sent you guys an email, which I gave you guys copies of. And I also sent Chad what we had sent to the attorney, what the attorney had sent back. Did you get my email, Chad?
I did, I did, right. Some adjustments.
Do you guys have any questions?
So.
Is this the food sovereignty ordinance?
Yep.
Discuss some of these changes or can you do?
For the record, Edward Baker. Um, I have.
This is the food sovereignty.
I'm not aware of the town attorney's letter concerning the.
For the record, Edward Baker's ordinance, when I wrote this, therefore on my letter, please.
We're not aware of the town attorney's letter number eight concerning the proposed attorney already ordinance, when I wrote this, and therefore on my letter, please scratch paragraph number eight. Since the town attorney already addressed the issue of liability. By our responsibility and he recommended. Recommendation was not to address liabilities instead of state legislature. Liability. The only, most of my letters are. And he recommended it in the ordinance not have a paragraph related to liability. The only, most of my letters are. Like to bring up, and that is in either correcting sexualization or maybe some wording. Specifically subsection C. There is one change that I would like to bring up, and that is in. Where in C says direct access to roadside stands, farm-based sales and direct producers and consumer transactions. And I'd like to bring to the. There in C says direct access to roadside stands, farm-based sales and direct producers and consumer transactions. I'd like to bring to the town detention that roadside stands in ordinance does not necessarily. That there must be a person-to-person transaction. May be unattended, and so. And the food sovereignty ordinance and the state statute says that there must be a person-to-person transaction. And so. If you look at the definition, the second part of the ordinance, you'll see that it. An unattended roadside stand. Describes what a direct producer-to-consumer transaction. People are aware of that, but if you look at the definitions in the second part of the ordinance, you'll see that it describes what a direct producer-to-consumer transaction.
That is not how I understood it.
Face-to-face transaction involving food. Well, I, we might want to seek clarification, because that's pretty, you know, you read that, you read the definition of face-to-face transaction, to me is pretty cut and dry.
Well, I, we might want to seek clarification, because that's pretty, you know, if you read that, if you read the definition
of face-to-face transaction, to me is pretty cut and dry. Face-to-face transaction. Also, some of the. And so.
But it doesn't say face-to-face.
If you have a unattended roadside stand, that is not a. Definition of a. Face-to-face transaction. Direct producer-to-consumer transaction. Also, some of the.
But it doesn't say face-to-face, but it says person-to-person.
It says face, well, if you read, if you read the definition of a direct producer-to-consumer transaction.
Hold on a second. I just can't imagine.
Using the word face-to-face transaction is incorrect, because that's nowhere in the ordinance. The phrase that's used is a direct producer-to-consumer transaction. I think, using the word face-to-face transaction is incorrect, because that's nowhere in the ordinance. The phrase that's used is a direct producer-to-consumer transaction. It is a face-to-face transaction as opposed to a unat, you know, anything else. So, we might want to get some clarification from the town attorney as to whether or not. Unattended roadside stand would be, you know, fall underneath this ordinance. The, we might want to get some clarification from the town attorney as to whether or not unattended roadside stand. People who wanted to have a roadside stand and. This ordinance.
It is for roadside stand like if she had baked goods.
I'm not sure what the, what was the motivation for the ordinance, if it was for people who wanted to have a roadside stand, and I don't think we're addressing it well here.
It is for roadside stand like if she had baked goods. That was the. And, uh, we sent them.
Redlined it.
Yeah.
And then gave us.
What we had, we had got some from Greenwood and Bethel.
No, that's just.
And we, I think we chose a little bit of both, most of Bethel, sent it to the attorney. We redlined it and then gave us.
Well, before you move on, can you just tell me where on C, like face-to-face?
That's just, something that caught my eye was, and we might just want to get the clarification on that. Okay, if you go up to the.
Well, before you move on, can you just tell me where on C, like face-to-face, person-to-person? I'm very confused.
Under second.
There's like six different things here.
Okay, if you go up to the. The municipality may adopt ordinance regarding direct producer-to-consumer transactions. The state shall recognize such ordinance by not interfering those state true laws. Says a municipality may adopt ordinances regarding direct producer-to-consumer transactions. And the state shall recognize such ordinance by not interfering those. State true laws regarding those direct producer-to-consumer transactions. Then if you go down to purpose. So what we're, so what we're, what the ordinance is addressing is this concept of direct producer-to-consumer transactions. Then if you go down to purpose, down in subsection C. And the point that I'm bringing up to the town is that. We want to protect access to roadside stands. A consumer transaction by definition does not allow for a. And the point that I'm bringing up to the town is that.
By definition.
A producer-to-consumer transaction by definition. Of a direct producer-to-consumer transaction is a face-to-face transaction. Involving food or food products at the site of production. By, the definition of a, of a direct producer-to-consumer transaction is a face-to-face transaction involving food or food products at the site of production. The roadside stand would not be covered by this ordinance.
So it would make any unattended.
And therefore, depending on the. It would not. The roadside stand would not be covered by this ordinance. Food seller's license or whatever it's called, that, you know, pay the twenty-five dollars to the state. Depending on the, I'm not, I would have assumed that then you'd, you'd have to have the state food seller's license or whatever it's called. That, you know, pay the twenty-five dollars to the state and get that.
Grocery store selling to the consumer.
Get that license. Either way, you probably, either, again, I'm not a lawyer, either way, I think you, the, that producer would have to have.
Selling your goods to the grocery store.
With the state.
And the grocery store selling them to the consumer.
Either way, probably, either, again, I'm not a lawyer, either way, I think the, the app producer would have to have the proper paperwork with the state. It's, it's also direct, it's also covered by the state statute that allows for the food sovereignty.
Is this definition from the state?
Cook from home and sell their stuff.
It's, it's also direct, it's also covered by the state statute that allows for the food sovereignty concept. It's twenty-five dollars and then, and actually.
Right, they have to get a license.
They have to get a license.
Make sure that they are. And that license is not a big deal.
So I guess my question is, if that said a person-to-person transaction, would that be different?
Did that, the ordinance would not be in compliance with the state statute.
So I guess my question is, if that said a person-to-person transaction, would that be different?
Did that, the ordinance would not be in compliance with the state statute.
Like, I have a roadside stand, I don't sell anything.
The state statute here specifically talks about a. I think if you did that, the ordinance would not be in compliance with the state statute. Because the state statute here specifically talks about a. This is relating to, to food products other than meat and meat products and poultry and poultry products, which still have to be covered by the state. This is relating to, to food products other than meat and meat products and poultry and poultry products. Which still have to be covered by the state regulatory process. So, that's. So the. No, not unless it's edible. It's an interesting thing that needs, that hasn't been addressed. I haven't seen it anywhere. The town lawyer didn't pick up on it. So, that's.
Somebody mighty would have.
So the. That's one thing to follow up on. It's, it's an interesting thing that needs, that hasn't been addressed. I hadn't seen it anywhere. The town lawyer didn't pick up on it, but. Grammar or some wording that might be redundant, which is up to the. To the select board. The other items in my. Whether or not they're. Are just grammar or some wording that might be redundant, which is up to the. The definition of local foods, I suggest we whether or not they're. The word main in the town of Nury. For instance, in, under the definition of local foods, I, I suggest that we change the word main in the town of Nury. My suggested edits or request to review for edits. And that we, yes. Are there any other, any other questions online?
Section where you have.
Suggested edits or.
Section five, section seven, addition of food.
Request to review for edits.
And it says in the first sentence, change non-alcoholic, non-alcoholic cider induced to just cider. Section where you have.
The second part of that, if you read the. If you go to that section, the last sentence in the section says.
Non-alcoholic, non-alcoholic cider induced to just cider.
May not contain cannabis or alcohol. If you read, the second part of that. To say non-alcoholic cider. If you go to that section, the last sentence in the section says may not contain. Fruit products may not contain cannabis or alcohol. So to say non-alcoholic cider and then, in the next very next sentence to say fruit products cannot contain cannabis or alcohol, it's kind of redundant. I would believe maple syrup would. Or there might be. The producer. Having a stand on Sunny River Road selling maple syrup when your sugar house is a couple miles away. It might be. Probably is not covered by this, you know, this ordinance. Having a stand on Sunny River Road selling maple syrup when your sugar house is a couple miles away. Well, no, it'd be at the sugar house, because that's where the. It's not at the site of production. But the, the, the whole idea of food sovereignty is that. Well, no, it'd be at the sugar house. Now the individual is, has got the onus on them. The, the whole idea of food sovereignty is that. And the state wants to make sure that the individual is at the site of production. The individual is, has got the onus on them. As to what they're purchasing. And the state wants to make sure that the individual is at the site of production, so the individual can see. The consumer. Where the products are coming from and whether or not they want to buy the products from such a. Manufactured baked. So, if you have a remote roadside stand, the consumer cannot see. Background as to why the wording is such as to. Manufactured baked. Direct, prepared, processed. Our producer-to-consumer. So that's, that's the little background as to why the wording is such as to. Also, interestingly note that this ordinance does not allow for. Producer-to-consumer. Baked goods to be sold at Grange Hall during a. It's also, also interesting to note that this ordinance does not allow for. Licensed by the state. Baked goods to be sold at the Grange Hall during a, a, you know, craft show. Unless that person is licensed by the state and meets the state licenses. The answer to that is, no, you don't need a license, because that's a vegetable. You grow, you grow night, it's a. That's the one thing I didn't, if it's, if it's not processed. The answer to that is, no, you don't need a license, because that's a vegetable. That would fall under this ordinance if you sold, if the person came to your door and knocked at your door and said, may I buy five jars of pickles? Take those cucumbers and your pickle. Certainly, and they could sit there and look at the kitchen behind you. This ordinance, if you sold it, if the person came to your door and knocked at your door and said, may I buy five jars of pickles? At selling at a. They could sit there and look at the kitchen behind you where the pickles were canned. Is not covered by this ordinance, because you're not at the site of production. But, but at, selling at a farmer's market. Is not covered by this ordinance, because you're not at the site of production.
That, that's allowed.
Or a process. That's allowed. That, that is allowed. As long as they don't pickle them or. Or process.
Put it on a box up inside the road.
But, that's allowed.
That's allowed. That, that is allowed, as long as they don't pickle them or, or process. Or process.
Is the question for an existing business, the pie stand up there.
Might be nice to pick.
They, they have a facility.
Leave them on the right.
You can see them in there, sometimes they are in there, but just on the honor system. The pies are in the stand, you buy it, put your money in the. They have a facility. What effect would that have?
The question is, is that, is that a face-to-face transaction?
Stand you buy, put your money in the.
Then.
So would it make that, what effect would that have?
The question is, is that, is that a face-to-face transaction?
But if they have a license.
If they have a license, it's not.
Then they're fine, right?
Not a, not a, I, I won't, I would say it's not in compliance with the ordinance. One thing I will say, I did ask you. If they have a license, it's not. I will go back and say, there's one good idea in the liability section, even though the, our town lawyer. The one thing I will say, I did ask you to require delete paragraph eight. I will go back and say, there's one good idea in the liability section, even though the, our town lawyer says not to mention it, is the requirement of a sign at the point of sale saying that. Be up there in my paragraph eight. Yeah, see how it is that, a sign that says. I guess their producer shall inform their patrons. It's a non-licensed facility. Products are not licensed. So that would be up there in my paragraph eight, subpar paragraph two. I guess their producers shall inform their patrons that products are not licensed from, or not from a licensed facility. The producer would have to have the license, the producer would, if the producer's licensed, then they wouldn't have to provide this.
They would be the producer.
They wouldn't fall under this ordinance.
They wouldn't fall under this ordinance, period. The producer would have to have the. But if you're, if you're going to. If the producer's licensed, then they wouldn't have to provide this. That is attended by the producer and you buy goods there.
They would fall under this ordinance.
This whole ordinance is buyer v. buyer. To, to a roadside stand that is attended by the producer and you buy goods there. Nury ordinance, food sovereignty ordinance. This whole ordinance is buyer v. buyer. Just that the buyer then knows, okay, I should be aware of that. Newery ordinance. Only if it's posted on the roadside and it's a four-by-eight. Or four-by-six.
Or, they come under the sign ordinance, son?
No, I don't think so. This is posted on the roadside and it's a four-by-eight.
Next to, next to your bucket of cucumbers.
And, and your honor system cash box. This is, we're just talking about a little sign next to your point of sale. No.
Next to, next to your bucket of cucumbers.
And, and your honor system cash box.
I was just thinking if we was creating something, are they going to get another license on top of another license?
No, no, the, 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 the town ordinance for signage is totally different. That's about putting a big sign out saying. Stop here for gas. On the case of Sunny River. For cannabis, so. Unless there's purely questions.
One of six cases.
Yeah.
So is that something we want to do is get clarification?
Unless there's purely questions from the select board.
His original came from us, attorney.
Take my seat.
I can send back Ted's.
So is that what we want to do is get clarification?
You tell me, if that's what you want. His original came from us, attorney. I can send back Ted's. Thanks, we'd have to have another public hearing.
When you guys approved, uh, taking the ord, the ordinance to town meeting, A town meeting.
Well, you guys go to last to some. This is all. We did, when you guys approved, uh, taking the ord, the ordinance to town meeting, A town meeting, we thought we were going to end up having A special town meeting. So it's just been sitting there.
Back in December.
This is.
Well, I just got this from Ted the other day, so.
You had it back before, but.
So this is.
Back in December. Well, I just got this from Ted the other day, so I didn't.
And if we change it.
So this is something, has to be voted on by the town.
I request it is, yes.
If we don't have time for a public hearing between the attorney review and.
Have another public hearing.
Timelines for public hearings are pretty strict. Can it just be stricken from the warrant for this time around? I have a question.
Yep.
If, if we don't have time for a public hearing between the attorney review and. Basic. Timelines for public hearings are pretty strict. Can it just be stricken from the warrant for this time around?
We could have a special town meeting.
Yeah, because Windsor.
We did today.
We could have a special town meeting later on.
I mean.
Yeah, we'd get a huge.
It's not life or death. No, I, I, yeah. I mean.
It's not life or death.
No, I, I, yeah, you just don't want to scare anybody over.
We have a new one right up the road now, that showed up just this spring.
But not all roadside stands.
People with chickens with excess eggs, I just put them in a cooler and put them out there for a while.
Well, that's really good. Another question, is an egg a poultry product?
Oh, the chicken and the egg.
Well, that leads to another question, is an egg a poultry product? It is a processed.
The chicken and the egg.
Exactly.
Who processed it? Yeah, well, it just surprises me, because you think that the, this concept of a roadside stand and the producer. Yeah, well, it surprises me. Concept of a roadside stand and the.
We have what he wants to. We said this to Victor. And he, they wrote this for us.
Well, I guess my question is if you, if we do the sign thing, who's going to police that?
Ted said his.
Back to our whole thing of, why are we going to make a bunch of rules? Well, I guess my question is if you, if we do the sign thing, who's going to police that? That goes back to our whole thing of, why are we going to make a bunch of rules? Because there's nobody. Two and five. I'm not going to go check everybody's stand to see if there's a little paper that says their license. Well, maybe it's a good idea, but, because nobody can check it.
So this food sovereignty ordinance is what Jim, they rolled up and give us. This is just.
Yes, Ted said, yep, yep.
Friday.
I would say, what we've got, the attorney wrote out. I would say, whenever we vote. I would say, what we've got, the attorney wrote out, and people can vote it down or. Where, whenever we vote, is that going to be?
Town meeting, yeah.
So that we can have that discussion if people.
Well, that was his section.
Vote it down or.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not in there. Makes sense. Well, that was his section that he added.
But the people can vote it down if they don't.
Right, if they don't like the wording or whatever, then we can.
Vote it down.
Yes, that's why I was so confused.
Well, because I had done your packet and I realized.
But the people can vote it down if they don't. Correct, if they don't like the wording or whatever, then we can.
I kept trying to find the difference.
There wasn't. I tried to make the order. Well, because I had done your packet.
Now I understand.
But I'd already had your packet done.
Sorry. Well, I kept trying to find the difference in them.
There wasn't. I tried to make the order, order to a different color.
Right. Now I understand.
But I'd already had your packet done.
So I make a motion, then we take the food sovereignty ordinance.
As is.
As is. To the town pro bowl. They move the second that we take the food sovereignty ordinance.
And then if it gets voted down, it's going to clarify, then we can change it again.
Yes.
Reassess and then. And then if it gets voted down and it's going to clarify, then we can.
And then if it gets voted down, it's gonna clarify, then we can change it again, reassess, and then start over.
Close the public hearing.
Think we'll wait. Yes, I make a motion, wait, close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Do we need a motion for that? Close the, I make a motion, wait, close the public hearing.
I'm gonna think we close the public hearing.
Yes, I was hoping to have the assessor the other evening.
Update on the personal property tax.
He says it's coming tomorrow. Because he had, we had another challenge.
Yes, I was hoping to have...
It's gotta be decided by...
The assessor the other evening.
June first.
He says it's coming tomorrow because he had, we had another challenge tonight to go over the personal property stuff. Uh, it's gotta be decided by, uh, June first. That's the, we did a forty-five day extension that was signed by Mr. Durbin. And I give you what he had presented to us, so the assessor wanted you guys to look at that, see what you thought of the values that he had given us.
He actually had somebody else.
If you thought they were, okay, you guys have these copies, right?
That doesn't mean our assessor is gonna agree with those or you guys or whatever. Yep, yep.
He actually had somebody else.
Yeah. That doesn't mean our assessor is gonna agree with those or you guys or whatever. Yep, yep. Right, right, I'm with you.
Gavin definitely, do not know.
Yes, I mean, what they were putting on appraisal for something that hasn't worked, I would know this.
Right, right, I'm with you.
Yes, I mean, what they were putting on the appraisal for something that hasn't worked for, how many years, I don't know. So how do they come up with a figure on that?
Well, because...
But while the assessor did not at first glance agree with some of the fakers, so...
But we'll see what he says tomorrow. We'll bring it back to you guys. Did want you guys to see this.
For November.
Correction for us to go.
Yep, yep.
Worst-case scenario, it's still gonna go away. We'll see what he comes up with.
Yep, yep. For November.
Correction for us to go.
Yep, yep.
So, and that's why when he gives us his...
It's still gonna go the way it's gonna go.
Guidance. And we talked to the attorney, we have a decision.
So, and that's why when he gives us his guidance. And we talked to the attorney, then we're gonna have a decision, what you guys wanna do by, finalized by June first.
Do you really really want a sponsorship to join a non-societal?
It would be good because they would help us with grants and stuff. Um, so I talked to Merrill Kelly.
It would be good because they would help us with grants and stuff.
Probably we don't get it. And hers was, um, if we could get something to work for the transfer station, but I didn't see any of that.
Merrill Kelly from Bethel, and she is part of the community resilience. And hers was, um, if we could get something to work for the transfer station, but I didn't see any of that on the list of...
But I looked at the list, I didn't find many stuff that would really apply.
Right, there was a few things, the lighting, um, couple other things, but not... Nothing that would...
Be huge.
Other than the fact it doesn't cost us anything.
Right.
It's got the electric vehicles.
I don't know, does any sense of joining something just for the sake of joining something that's not...
Other than the fact it doesn't cost us anything.
We're lowly.
Well, I'm not gonna build a new building, are you?
We're lowly. Hold on.
Depends on how we go in the future.
We're gonna build a new building.
Who says?
Clean energy.
While there's no, no saying that we're not gonna... Depends on how we go in the future.
Right, right.
They can only have so many towns, and if they find other towns that would work well for them, we're taking up a spot.
I don't know. My, my opinion is that we...
Nothing to say that we can't join this way.
They can only have so many towns, and if they find other towns that would work well for them, we're taking up a spot.
I will make a motion that we not join...
Nothing to say that we can't join this way.
Right, right, and that's what she said.
And move the second that we do not join the main community of the...
I will make a motion that we not joining the community resilience partnership.
And move the second that we do not join the main community of the resilience partnership. Can we study between here and Sunday River?
I give you a copy of the money that you have gotten before. Daryl, would you like to speak to this?
I'd like to make an edit to the agenda. Discuss road study between Newery and Sunday River Ski Resort.
I give you a copy of the money that you have gotten before. Daryl, would you like to speak to this?
I'd like to make an edit to the agenda. Well, the state's gonna get involved eventually, um, but to start, it would be, it would be Newery and the ski resort.
We wanted the state involved in that too, if they're not with...
Well, the state's gonna get involved eventually, um, but to start, it would be... It would be Newery and the ski resort. We have...
We don't have a baseline. I don't have any records that we've ever had a traffic now.
Eight to ten days a year right now that are big traffic concerns, and they also affect another community, they affect other businesses as well as state roads, but we don't have a baseline.
Their engineer can't find anything.
I don't have any records here that we've ever had a traffic.
I remember seeing the rubber hoses across the road.
And that may not have been the state. That could have been another interest, could have been Merrill Kelly.
Your engineer can't find anything.
I remember seeing the rubber hoses across the road.
And that may not have been the state.
It's a baseline that hasn't been established, but it's also...
Have a traffic count. So it's just one of those things that it's a lot of work for nothing. It's, it's a baseline that hasn't been established. It's also part of our planning board review for site plans and subdivisions. Kinda hard for us to put our foot down and say we want this, when we don't have a baseline.
Not necessarily, my neighbor that... Oh, I think in the long run it will help them as far as development, maybe they put in a...
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Because it's gonna be all-inclusive, it wouldn't just be public road.
Oh, I think in the long run it will help them as far as development, maybe they put in a different road, different access. We do, they do something internally different with their roads. Because the study would be all-inclusive, it wouldn't just be public road, it would be their roads too. They offer to pay for this, but I think it's important that it's not their study.
I don't want people saying, wow.
Town and, you know, I like partnering with businesses, I think that's great, but I don't think it should be without the town. I think we should definitely be part of that.
I don't want people saying, wow.
Town and area, town about certain state domains. Business owners or resident territories.
That's right, yeah.
I think that we should...
Yeah.
That's right. So that's why we've called the chamber.
I think that we should, obviously, I don't know, the town and area, town about the, yes, we are interested in this.
So let me just point out the key problem with trying to involve too many players already at once. I'll use a transfer station as an example.
The town and area, town of Bethel.
Do I need to say anymore?
So let me just point out the key problem with trying to involve too many players already at once. I'll use a transfer station as an example. Do I need to say anymore? I'd just as soon start this with the, with the community that is most affected with our business.
So, I mean, I'm all for not having a huge committee, but it really does affect a lot.
We're not slowed away anyway, so it won't matter. So, I mean, I'm all for not having a huge committee, but it really does affect a lot. Yeah, right, yeah.
It don't exist without the traffic.
Yeah, I gotta have hit that, yeah, I gotta have to have the, we've got to have, in the chamber. I'd like the area businesses, I mean, all those beautiful restaurants that we all like to enjoy, don't exist without the traffic from Sunday River. Let's be honest, I mean, we locals can't support that kind of, of business, so, so.
We're trying an engineer, we're doing RFP.
I'm not saying that we wouldn't have a committee, we will, but we need to start somewhere, and this gets us started.
We didn't fund anything this year, so this ain't something that...
We have to find an engineer, we do an RFP, all those fun things that we do when we go out to bid for this type of project.
How much it's gonna cost. And we didn't fund anything this year, so this ain't something that's gonna, I mean, we know it's gonna cost us money. So, right, we gotta start somewhere to figure out.
How much is town meetings? We might give something else.
Well, you'd obviously say it's gonna take a hot minute to get all of this situated and organized.
I mean, we could have a special town meeting.
You guys are the road commissioners.
We might need it for something else.
No.
I mean, obviously it's gonna take a hot minute to get all of this situated and organized. I mean, it's not gonna happen.
You guys are the road commissioners, so, no, no, it's gonna take a lot longer than a couple weeks.
So, would our first step be is to...
We got, we got a visit from...
He came to us.
The president, it was brought up with the three of us, right? And he flat out said, yes, do it. And I have emails to that effect.
We got, we got a visit from the president, and we were brought up with the three of us, and he flat out said, yes, do it.
We'd advertise just like we did for the church, and how we got that engineer, saying, here's the scope of work, this is what we're looking for. I don't even know what the scope of work would look like yet. I have to research that.
We'd advertise just like we did for the church, and how we got that engineer, saying, here's the scope of work, this is what we're looking for. I don't even know what the scope of work would look like yet.
Well, no, but you guys, you are the road commissioner, so, while I may be the face that sits here Monday through Friday, I come back to you Monday through Thursday. Sorry. Look at the blessing.
Well, looking for you guys to, well, no, but you guys, you are the road commissioners, while I may be the face that sits here Monday through Friday, I come back to you. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. I mean, I, because there is more work to be done, and I didn't want to go testing about this. On the internet. Oh, look, we're advertising for an RFP.
Permission to staff the ball rolling on this. Everybody, get by a court enforcement officer.
Nope, deputy road commissioner.
Deputy road commissioner. Permission to staff the ball rolling on this, to start the process for the road staff.
I'm not going outside right now anyway, I'm gonna stick around.
They're not all there, I forgot one. I needed, I needed enlist to help with somebody taller to get it down, because I was standing on a snowbank.
I'm not going outside right now anyway, I'm gonna stick around. I forgot one. I need, I need an enlist to help with somebody taller to get it down, because I was standing on a snowbank. Long time. All right, thank you.
Probably very upset to ruin the last one.
Um, we have to send out thirty-day notices, and we've got some, uh, twelve, fifteen, five, six. We have to send out thirty-day ones. We've got some, uh, twelve, fifteen, five, six.
Well, yeah, yeah, we're at. I just hope that we don't, no, I don't have thirty-day notices. You don't wanna go too high because some people... Well, yeah, yeah, we're at. No, I don't need that. You don't wanna go too high because some people just...
It's added on to that tax payer spot.
Yeah.
How much is certified mail? We don't wanna leave anybody for...
It's added on to that tax payer spot.
Yeah, we don't, yeah. It is, it's stupid. So, we don't wanna leave somebody for, I mean, you can make it ten, I don't know.
So that's why I was trying to say five dollars.
Because we do have one guy that's on there, his, his original tax is five dollars.
We send out reminder letters for the people that forget to pay their interest.
So we would never, so that's why I'm trying to say five dollars. Yeah.
I mean, I'm signing it as ten dollars.
We send out reminder letters for people that forget to pay their interest.
So most of those are like interest or...
Yeah, because they, you know.
Wait until last minute.
And they don't call us to ask what they owe, they just set what they owe.
I'll make a motion that we decide on five dollars or more, send out thirty-day notices immediately.
Looking for...
I'll make a motion that we decide on five dollars or more, send out thirty-day notices immediately.
Five dollars or more for meetings or thirty-day notices, all those same ones. Move the second that we... Sit at five dollars or more for meetings or thirty-day notices.
We talked about this before.
I can't remember how it was left, and it's been all over the manager's listserv, and it's coming up, but I thought I'm gonna ask this. I do remember talking about this.
We talked about this before, and I can remember, we decided we were gonna wait until...
I can't remember how it was left, and it's been all over the manager's listserv, and it's coming up, and I thought I'm gonna ask this.
I do remember talking about this.
And I can remember, we decided we were gonna wait until...
Because I think it's to be different.
We can work it, and we can take it up when we do redo our personnel policy.
No, no, because I got that voted up pretty quick.
It falls on Monday, too. We can work it, and we can take it up when we do redo our personnel policy that goes off.
I will tell you, let's take it up when we redo, uh, policy.
Okay.
And I guess now we're back to deputy town clerk report.
So this year we decided to send out postcards to everyone who...
It's now we're back to deputy town clerk.
Some people forgot, some people payments, we've had a really good, um, a really good outcome with that.
So this year we decided to send out...
Some people had any, we'd sent out three hundred and we're down to like a hundred.
Thirty hundred, some of those had their whole year's taxes that they actually paid some. A really good outcome with that. Some people had any, um, so it's about three hundred and we're down to like a hundred and thirty. Some of those were their whole year's taxes that they actually paid some.
You're gonna add that it's on the town website.
It's not on Facebook, it will be.
It's gonna be, um, it is on the town's website, and... You're gonna add that it's on the town website.
It's not on Facebook, it will be.
It's gonna be, um, it is on the town list's website, and...
I emailed you, and I emailed everybody that was on that list, Jane and...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Thanks a lot, guys.
I emailed you, and I emailed everybody that was on that list, Jane and...
But you didn't do it anyway.
Thanks a lot, guys, thanks a lot.
Called me and they said, I'm serious the last...
Waiter.
There's something I said, call.
Yeah, hip waiters, hip waiters for everyone.
Your hands are all floating over.
I do have a kayak in my front yard.
Yeah, hip waiters, hip waiters for everyone.
Good thinking, Brooks, well, we don't have those.
Your hands are all floating over.
I do have a kayak in my front yard.
Um, you mailed your guys' copies of the bridge inspections, didn't you?
Today?
Nope.
Probably all changed now from their, yesterday.
Tell us what they said.
Too much to tell you.
Probably all changed now from their, yesterday.
Chase Hill, Branch Hill.
Too much to tell you.
Branch Hill or Chase Hill, Brooke. That's Branch Hill.
Chase Hill, Chase Hill, Branch Hill.
So you can spec it up, Richard.
Chase Hill, Branch Hill or Chase Hill, Brooke. Okay. Then the pain brook. Wow, that was-
Bridge.
Yeah, it is.
And the Eames.
So they've been stuck in that bridge.
Yes.
No, I didn't get it, it's ridiculous.
Then they did the pain brook. That must be done. Different, and the Eames Bridge.
Yeah, because this only has the three attached.
Yeah, they did those.
Get the issues.
Yeah.
And then there'd be Simmons over the Sunday River.
That one must be done at a different time.
Yeah, because this only has the three attached.
Yeah. Yeah. I can make you copies if you want and all that nonsense. Um-
Assessors coming. Still working on the joint select board meeting, can't seem to-
I thought that was May ninth.
Well, um, so they're gonna make it May ninth, so I don't know when it is.
Assessors come to meet.
I'm not gonna worry about it right now because-
Still working on the joint select board meeting, can't seem to-
I thought that was May ninth.
Well, yeah, 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 so I don't know. I don't know when it is yet.
I'm not gonna worry about it right now.
So we're still hanging out there, we have not got anything set for trash yet.
Well, we said one date, a couple of dates for us.
June, January.
And then change it.
I don't know when it is yet. We've got Mima, heard from Mima for-
So we're still hanging out there, we have not got anything set for trash yet.
They have individual applications, I don't know anybody other than-
Almost time, Bruce, we're gonna get.
We've got Hamid Hogg, um, applications that they can fill out.
We've got Mima, heard from Mima for-
For help possibly.
The wonderful storm, they have individual applications, if we know anybody other than the ones on the Sunday River Road, they got Hamid Hogg. Um, applications that they can fill out also for help possibly from, we gotta meet the threshold, but it's gonna be almost thirty eight hundred dollars.
Like Amy said, town reports are printed.
The cost.
And we have to appoint to- Bruce is our fire, has, was our firewarden state law, is it goes to fire chief?
Like Amy said, town reports are printed.
If he doesn't want it, it can go to-
And we have to appoint to-
Just need the blessing of the select board.
Um, Bruce is our fire, has, was our firewarden state law, is it goes to the fire chief if he doesn't want it, it can go to-
Um, so I'm recommending that we-
Someone else, but we just need the blessing of the select board.
Has Bruce for-
For burn permits and force fire or whatever else it is that you do. Um, so I'm recommending that we-
Because the state-
I talked to Alan today.
Had Bruce not realizing he was not fire chief.
Fire warden and take.
It is, according to the law, it follows the fire chief unless he does not want it, and then the municipal officers have to.
Because the state had Bruce not realizing he was not fire chief. He doesn't really want it. According to the law, it follows the fire chief unless he does not want it, and then the municipal officers have to appoint.
So it would actually be Alan, Alan Thar.
President Newry Town Fire Warden.
Right.
When this kind of all transpired, when I retired, it was brought to the attention of Brad Bucknell.
Bruce Spears.
And Brad Nye and Alan talked about it.
President Town Fire Warden.
Brad says, well, normally the position goes to the fire chief. It was brought to the attention of Brad Bucknell.
If you still wanted it to be the fire town warden, then the state is okay.
Brad says, well, normally the position goes to the fire chief.
So I continued on as town fire warden.
But if you still wanted it to be the fire town warden, then the state is okay with that.
The state.
And Alan says, that's fine, I don't care. So I continued on as town fire warden, where I have been receiving paychecks from the town. So, but they, but they, they did say that, yes, it does, basically it does boil down to the town, but it is not law that has to be the, the fire from the town.
They had you from two thousand two.
So, but they, but they, they did say that, yes, it does, basically it does boil down to the town, but it is not law that it has to be the, the fire chief.
Right.
So.
Well, I guess my question is, do you wanna be the fire warden?
I do wanna be the fire warden.
Take, do you wanna be the other guy?
Do you get a paycheck from the state?
No. Usually I take it to this side of town, but that's gonna be that side of town.
Well, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, because I'm, with my understanding that I am the forest warden for the town of Newry. I didn't know anything about a deputy.
I just have to think it's odd.
Well, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, because I'm, with my understanding that I am the, the forest warden for the town of Newry.
I used to be.
I didn't know anything about a deputy.
I just have to think it's odd that the warden isn't on the side.
Well, if they wanna take it away from me, they can take it away from me.
No, I said join the fire club.
What's that?
So I told you to join the fire club. So.
Well, if they wanna take it away from me, they can take it away from me.
No, I said join the fire club.
What's that?
So I told you to join the fire club. Deputy fire warden.
So, looking for, if you guys wanna-
One of them would be the fire warden.
As fire warden, deputy fire warden.
Or they both would be, both, the email says deputy, the law says fire, forest fire warden, sorry.
So would you, one of them would be the fire warden.
I mean, it's probably kinda convenient for people to have one on each side.
Or they both would be, well, the email says deputy, the law says fire.
Forest fire warden, subject to approval of the municipal officers.
I mean, it's probably kinda convenient for people to have one on each side.
An appointed forest fire warden may appoint one or more deputy forest fire warden.
Well, it says right in the town warrant that Alan's the deputy fire warden. That's what says, that's what says in warrant that I read.
Would have somebody else that could write.
It can change.
Well, it says right in the town warrant that Alan's the deputy fire warden. He doesn't wanna be the town warden, that's what says, that's what says in the warrant.
He's the warden in Riley.
And I talked to Alan this afternoon.
Things can change, hopefully.
Well, if you're seeing Alan as a woman, like-
Well, he is the one-
He doesn't wanna be the town warden. He's the warden in Riley.
Right. I talked to Alan this afternoon.
So I'll make a motion to continue Bruce being the-
It ain't wrong.
Whatever the official title is.
So I, I would say. Most is the one and then-
So I'll make a motion to continue Bruce being the, whatever the official title, title is, warden. And paying being the other official title.
Bruce Spears continues as fire warden and being one team as deputy fire warden. Move the second of that agreement in favor? Bruce Spears continues as fire warden and being one team as deputy fire warden.
What's that?
All those in favor?
In favor?
In favor.
Please make an appointment to come be sworn in.
What's that?
Just then, now you just need to make an appointment to come be sworn in.
Sworn in?
Yeah, right, Bruce. You have to be sworn in.
Alright, what's that?
Just then, now you just need to make an appointment to come be sworn in.
Yeah. First one, donuts. Yeah, right.
I don't have my urinal on.
So does this, would this be done once a year like all the others?
Yeah.
I don't have my urinal on.
That way things don't get forgotten and I have to write to the state.
Would this be done once a year like all the others?
Yes.
After, so after down.
Yeah. But just do it on a yearly basis, that way things don't get forgotten and I have to write to the state.
And we can swear you, swear at you once a year.
Yeah, what is it? Yep, that's all I have, town meeting is May fifteenth. Don't forget to come.
What time?
Swear at you once a year.
Yes.
Will you need it or not?
Six P M.
Town meeting is that, sir?
Six P M, it's great, Charlie.
That's all I have, um, town meeting is May fifteenth.
Did we decide we're doing anything before?
Don't forget to come. What time? Six, what did I tell you?
I used to close the office at noon to get ready.
Town meeting is that, sir?
Six P M, it's great, Charlie.
Did we decide we're doing anything before?
Take bike for lunch.
We're gonna get on.
I used to close the office at noon to get ready.
Someplace good.
So I'm asking, can I close the office?
I might have to drive to New Jersey, but.
Take bike for lunch.
Don't make your leg come and back.
No, just ask if I close early, take that little lunch.
Someplace good, I might have to drive to New Jersey, but.